It doesn't like, like you said, it doesn't like Fertz channel.
Well, it is definitely the, I don't think that you. Well, we have so much trouble, you know. Roll side or sideways, you know, keeping that. Just keep on keeping on like.
Yes, that's what you do. Andrea Graham. They do, they do. Yeah, well, I mean, we're not for long, she's been there, you know.
Yeah, for a long.
At six o'clock, bring this, uh, Jefferson County Court of Division meeting, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, Jane, we do it.
Governor, Father, give thanks for another day, and we ask you to come to this meeting and help us decide a decision of the kind. And thought after we leave this meeting, I hope that you watch over everybody over the Christmas holiday that they be safe, Jesus name of God.
Thank you very much.
Let's begin. To the life of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and living, just as a strong.
Public comments. I do not have any teeth, so I'm just going to. Uh, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Sue.
A motion by Hank.
Sir.
Taken by Ricky, is any discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries now. Uh, minutes. I need a motion to for approval of November nine, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes.
I'm making a motion.
A motion by Ricky, I'll say. I'll say it by Van, is any other discussion on this matter? Here now, I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries now. Uh, financials. Need a motion to approve the payment of the fees. A motion by Van, I'll say. But James, any discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes now. Uh, recent development authority rail project development project. Okay, that's a date on current project and funded request to expand regular.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm Laura with Joint Development Authority, and I have guests to help explain the project, and I'll let them introduce themselves as they speak in their packet. We have, uh, some executives on the other projects, talking about things like this.
You're talking to.
Good evening, how are y'all doing?
Great.
Kevin Ellis, Chairman of the Joint Development Authority, also the Executive Director for the Bacon County Development Authority. Now we have Matt Carter, the Executive Director of Pierce County Development Authority, and Kerry Orman, Director of Athlin County Development Authority. And getting you know Laura, we're glad to have her on the team. Uh, we would like to, to ask for some consideration on funding at Bacon County, Athlin County, I believe is already approved. Um, we'll back to the joint authority. So, uh, if you wouldn't mind, you want to go through the Pierce County Rail Project, and I'll.
I'm going to borrow this for just a second. Gentlemen, if you don't mind, I don't know that you have this in your packet, but I want to refer to that is the red, green, and black lines. I believe, uh, Commissioner Wooten has seen that information before. The first little piece is where we've paid CSX three hundred and thirty-one thousand to basically order and put a spur in the park, or a switch, which allows for the right-of-way piece, which we have a contract that we're working on with Adam Warnock out of Savannah, which is an additional two hundred thousand. And then the red piece that's in that photograph is one Georgia funding that we obtained back in twenty twenty to put in the rest of the spur in the industrial park. You probably question, how's that going to help, uh, Jeff Davis County? At the end of the day, everything that crosses that current switch, the funds go back to the joint authority. Moving forward from there, those funds are to be used in the four counties. This is also an additional approximately fifty-eight acres in the front center of the Pierce County Industrial Park that whatever goes in that park, at the end of the day, you guys get twenty-five percent of the revenue comes off of it. Uh, what potential prospects? Timber is huge in every one of these counties. I know that that would be a strong possibility. Progress Rail is based out of Patterson, Georgia. I know that you guys have seen on the news recently with Mayfield, Kentucky, their parent company, the Progress Rail folks are based out of Mayfield, Kentucky. There's a lot of that work that potentially could shift to this area. They have actually committed to roughly forty-three locomotives to be stored in that park. So each car coming in and going out is fifty dollars coming in, fifty dollars coming out. Um, what other options? Poultry, I know poultry is huge in every one of these communities. There's opportunities with Cal Maine, right there in Blackshire, Georgia with feed. Uh, definitely don't want to take away from our local farmers, but with the growth that's there, it would take outside supplies to, uh, bring the feed in to benefit all of Cal Maine's operations. Those are a few that's in those notes, um, and would stop for just a second if you guys have got questions for me before turning back to Kevin.
Basically fifty grand a piece, right?
It's fifty grand, I mean, fifty dollars coming in.
Thirty-six thousand.
I can get back into where we are in that. Do you have a second page to that? Is there a back page on your handout?
For a second page, just a second.
Okay, y'all got a second.
There we go, the last line is thirty-six thousand.
Most important, the last line.
I do want to hit on something else Max said. Um, the fifty-eight acres in the, in the industrial park in Pierce County. Jeff Davis owns twenty-five percent of that park, or twenty-five percent of any revenue, whether that's land sale price, whether that's future tax dollars. Very similar to what Jeff Davis County is receiving from the Sweetwater Industrial Park on, uh, three forty-one. So with that being said, I, from, I'm not a history major or anything, but I believe, uh, it was in ninety-one or ninety-five, there was an initial investment, uh, around ninety thousand dollars from the three communities, Bacon, Jeff Davis, and Athlin County. Since then, uh, we've got the total, well, I'd say, three-quarters of the Sweetwater Park sold for Athlin County pellets. Still have sixteen or so acres, I believe, in that park. Uh, what you see on the back page is just a, a breakout from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty of the joint revenue received from each community. Now in Bacon County, I, I don't know how the funds are, are dispersed in Jeff Davis, but in Bacon County, uh, the, it's based on the millage break. The county general fund gets about forty-five percent of that, and the, uh, the school tax, the Board of Education gets the remaining, uh, percentage of that each year. But if you look at it, it's increasing every year. We came up with thirty-six thousand dollars, uh, as a half, just a fifty percent reinvestment for the next tax year. Back to the joint authority as an investment to continue the growth and opportunity. Uh, Matt did allude to the, the in-out fees, the fifty dollars in, fifty dollars out. But I think what really gives the value to, to each community is, number one, there's rail serp access in a park on the Highway eighty-fourth frontage that is six or seven miles from the rice yard. That's huge. The rice yard is very busy. If you ever go to Waycross, you won't be stopped by a train, I'm sure. We're trying to pick up some of that traffic, put it normal more. Uh, and again, that could be storage opportunities, and i- in addition to whatever poultry or, um, timber may come about. So just for your consideration, the, uh, I know that Bacon County voted, uh, maybe two months ago at their meeting to approve the thirty-six thousand, which was again roughly half of the anticipated joint revenue for their county. Leave Athlin County's authority last month, so now we're here to present it to you. Any questions on it?
This, the total, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, is that per county, or is that?
That was your money, yes, sir.
That was just that.
What we received.
That's what you received.
That's your, that's your percentage, yes.
So that was divided by three, now it will be divided by four, is twenty twenty-one?
No, sir.
No.
What we have currently, the way that we bring in Pierce County with this, any project which was, became a joint project before twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, before Pierce County, everything remains a third, a third, a third. So everything from Athlin County pellets, that's going to continue to be a third, a third, a third. Pierce County does not receive any of that funding. Now, if tomorrow we enter into an agreement in the Pierce County Park or any one of our community parks, and has a joint project, then it will be twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent, split four ways. Uh, so that just lets you know what would happen possibly in the Pierce County Park is twenty-five percent. But as you know, anytime you talk about rail infrastructure and rail projects, you're bringing up the revenue margin exponentially.
Well, which right now this group has no continuous revenue stream.
Correct.
Yeah, we, we have no, um, you know, we don't collect any millage, so, um, that original sick money is the only money that, that we've had. And then land sales or other deals that have been done.
That's right. So if you go back, if you go back to page one, um, the three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar price tag from CSX, um, you can blame it on pandemic, materials, labor, whatever you want. Uh, or the equipment we had before for that turnout, price tag from CSX was five hundred thousand dollars less. Get into COVID and everything else, uh, you fast forward a year, not even a year and a half, just over a year, and it jumps a hundred thousand dollars off us. So we've made that investment, uh, and we believe, again, we can grow any more future, future investments amongst the four counties.
These funds paid out yearly quarterly or how did that?
Uh, should be a check from the Athlin County Tax Assessor every year.
Yeah, annually, you receive those funds. They come into whatever county the facility is in, so in the Athlin County Pellets case, they come up to our tax commissioner, and then she will send out a check to each one of the counties that receives it. And be the same thing in Pierce. Once there's a project there, the Pierce County Tax Commissioner would distribute that funds.
And again, same thing with Bacon or Jeff Davis. If the joint authority is working on a project and we get one to locate in Jeff Davis or Bacon, again, since Pierce is out hard, it'll be twenty-five percent for each county.
Well, says, we're using their land as a drawing card for us as well, I mean, we're, we're outland.
Do you have a picture of the actual rail site in Pierce County?
Yeah.
If you get, if you have, okay. If you take a look, again, you talk about cut out, cutting out between the crop, the best location is eighty-four frontage with the CSX double track going to the Savannah Ford. I'm not going to get into why the Savannah Ford's very.
Looked very good.
Right. Uh, they cut out the best piece for us, and again, we appreciate that. I hope. But again, we're happy to answer any other questions. Thank y'all. Thank you.
I want to tell them, Mike, you obviously have time to catch me up, and they have to take me, I appreciate them, just spend their time.
Well, welcome to the team again. So I just had a conversation with, with some of our community leaders in Bacon County last week. Economic development is a team sport, and if anybody tells you different, they're just playing a game, and it's not a team game. So it takes everybody in this room, just like everybody in the leadership in Pierce and Athlin, Bacon, the same way. It takes everybody to know where we want to go, get on board the train, go.
And takes us all collectively.
That's right.
To pull things to our region.
We have to vote on that, pass a resolution, what do you know about?
A motion to approve.
Go ahead and do it, they can do it.
Absolutely.
Want to make any research?
Since we're in the last county.
We're making a motion to pay it when we got the.
Thank you.
I'm making a motion, but we paid.
Okay, sounds good. Good to see you.
Hey Laura, hold on a second. I mean, is there, is there an agreement or something that, that talks about what you just talked about?
Sure. Are you talking about the reinvestment of thirty-six thousand dollars? I believe it was in the last JDA meeting, I can see in those minutes, uh, that the JDA did discuss and approve asking, uh, thirty-six thousand per county.
The regional.
The regional.
Or are you looking for an agreement between the four counties for this, for this thirty-six thousand? That's not something that we have, but.
No, I believe, I'm sure in the law laws, we share all the costs, expenses, and the revenues equally. Uh, and again, anything that happened before Pierce County came on board in twenty eighteen is a third, a third, a third, revenues and expenses. Anything after twenty eighteen, twenty-five percent.
And that's.
So I would like to do a vote to approve allocation of the funds.
That's right.
Go ahead Ricky, I made the motion. We'll pay it, we got the money to pay it, we're going to pay it.
We got the motion by Ricky and a second by Hank, is any other discussion on the matter? Here now, I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good job. You're having a good evening.
Uh, elections, setting qualifying fees.
So in the packet on, uh, tab four, you will see the qualifying fees, um, that it's going to affect as of January one. It's a three percent of your base salary. So we just need the commissioner to vote to accept these qualifying fees.
Basically, this is set for by the state of Georgia, is what, right?
Correct.
Come wait, please.
Second. I got a motion by Hank, a second by Van, is any other discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor to approve the qualifying fees, raise your right hand. Motion carries now.
Just for, give us, what was it last year?
It hasn't changed. But there, there wasn't any, uh, for a reason.
I got you.
Uh, resolution or support reform to the Georgia annexation dispute resolution?
This is by ACCG, um, they sent this resolution asking for support or reform, this is for, um, all counties. They're trying to, um, it's, it's something that was actually at the ACCG conference, but they're supporting with most of, so Georgia annexation dispute. So they're just asking for the county to support this law.
Have you read that? No, I haven't. Oh, then I didn't.
Yes.
So what, and it's like.
Next question.
I remember reading it.
Because I see a bunch of weird asses and all that.
I remember recalling that, and I read it and said I didn't have a thought for it.
Because you've been saying ACCG longer for a week.
So I would need a motion to either approve or deny to support of the Georgia annexation dispute resolution.
Anybody got just a Cliff note of what this is?
So, um, honestly.
It has to do with disputes between cities, counties.
With their zone and.
And a way to do that with, um, uh, a certain procedure. Looks like they're amending the procedure. It's been a while since I read it.
I'll put you on the spot, but you know, I think we want something I don't need.
Y'all want to type it to the next mate?
I suppose the county can.
Well, table it for just a minute, let me, I'll read if I remember.
Can we come back to it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, let's move on to the next one, then that would be Burke's Ferry Land and Lease.
And that I do recall what happened about. I don't get it here, but I don't know about that. All right, so you recall, the last time I was here, we talked about the fact that the boat ramp two-five. The boat ramp is part of the lease, so I went in and, um, and revised the lease, which basically stated exactly what, which is, you know, previously, the lease stated that we owned the entire tract, and I guess that was just the standard lease. So I went in and revised it, basically said that we are the owner of the one point two acre, one point, one point two-five acre tract, uh, but that we have, um, restricted basement rights to that, uh, landing area. So basically just put all that in the legal language so that it, we, we're not warranting or representing that we necessarily have to be simple title to the landing itself. So, anyway, and I sent this to Mr. Bishop, uh, he's approved everything, and so it is where it needs to be. According to Mr. Bishop, though, they've, since the last time we talked, um, it's called, I guess everybody should know this, but Burke's Ferry, because there used to be a ferry right there, and so there's historical nature of Burke's Ferry. As I mentioned to Mr. Bishop, what we talked about the last time I was here, which was, you know, we could possibly move this landing over and put it on the one point two-five. And so he says that, that since then, they determined that because of the historical nature of the landing, that they're going to do an archaeological survey, phase one survey, uh, to determine whether or not they are going to have to keep the landing where it is as a historical place. And then, of course, so, so what he said was, is if we'll go ahead and enter into the resolution today, adopting, uh, adopting resolution, enter into the lease, and then we'll send executed copies to the N R, and hopefully we get it there in time. He said that we can put it before the January meeting, so when they adopt it, then they're, then, then they're going to have to go first to the archaeological survey, determine, uh, whether or not they can move the boat ramp or stay where it is, and then based on that survey or study, then they will move into the development and the planning and all that, come back to us. So this is, this is the first step as far as y'all adopting the resolution, and I've got a resolution there that pretty much just says that you're agreeing to enter into the lease and also authorizing Brad and or Heather to sign the lease. And I just saw in the email, we need three copies, so, uh, and they, he said, we'll send three copies, three originals of the resolution.
They have the originally signed.
And the signed lease, and then I guess they'll keep an original, we get an original back, and somebody else gets an original, so. So if you my recommendation that y'all adopt the resolution to enter into the lease as presented.
So y'all heard from Andy, and we discussed this several times, and, uh, everybody understood what was going on in that there. I would need a motion to adopt this resolution as stated tonight.
I want a motion.
I have a motion from Hank.
Sir.
I have a thank from Hank, is any other discussion on this matter?
You'll have this copy signed now, I guess.
Here now, I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries now. All right, redistricting maps, review and discuss new district maps. Has everybody seen their districts?
They're behind tab, um, six as well, and they're in color, so you can, the, everybody's changed, but Ricky's, Autumn Hall District did not change at all. Uh, based on the map that y'all have, and I sent y'all the old maps, the orange one, and the yellow one, the current map, um, and maybe give us a difference.
So quick question, is there any, uh, I mean. Mine changed, it changed mine.
Very little, it was, everything was, uh, very little, yes.
Mine has the most change.
Yes.
And you other county changes were, I guess, I, I just could probably pick one out. But it doesn't matter, based on population, it is.
Correct, based on the twenty twenty census.
Yes.
So does anybody have an issue with redistricting? Here now, I'll call for a vote to accept a new district map for Jeff Davis.
And if you have opposed resolutions, so enter into the resolution.
Yeah, there's a resolution, so that will.
Okay, well, I would need a motion to enter into a resolution for the new district map.
I'll approve it, yes.
A motion from Van.
Sir.
Second from Hank, is any other discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries now. Laura, we're on to updates, uh, EMS.
So he, he called me right before the meeting, they've had numerous calls come in, and he wasn't able to be here, so I'll give you the update. Um, there's not much of an update with EMS right now, they are at total of forty-two point two percent with their budget, and not, um, showing any overages other than in Newport timeline, but that is due to.
Short staff.
Um, other than that, um, again, this is why he's not here, is they're short staffed, and they've had numerous calls come in from different counties as well, or pick other things. So, um, it's, they're having a lot of business, but again, it's short staffed, so everybody looks good, it's not over, other than that, my, and that's all he wanted.
The next one on the independent line was fire EMA, but I'm sure everybody knows where they're at right now, there's a fire.
Charles, Charles, didn't mean this thing as well, because he's actually a grandmother, had a pain in concert, so. Um, so I had this update as well. Um, they said, uh, the fire update is, um, and that is actually behind tab seven of y'all's world, don't you? Um, they're waiting for the final letter from I S O on the grain, and should be sometime after, sometime after the holidays. Um, they currently have rescue number two out of service, waiting on a used motor to be installed. Uh, the truck is a two thousand and four Ford Explorer. Um, and they currently have around seven firefighters that have not met the state train requirements for twenty twenty-one. This means that they will be, um, that they will be suspended, um, until they are ready. Or this means that we will have to suspend it if this is not met. Um, as far as the EMA project, um, the only, he says the remaining items left to be completed, everything that he discusses, you know, y'all can see that list, but the only things that they are waiting to be completed is the I T, um, it still needs work, technical issues, refrigerator has to be purchased, a radio tower needs to be put up, a radio needs to be installed, plant hatch sirens, um, controls to be installed, weather sirens, paint rear inside building, and then the building plaque to be installed as well. So they've gotten a lot done, they're just, they're, they're on the end stretch, and he says, once it's done, you might have an open house for everybody to come look at.
Next on the update to, uh, update from our ministry.
Um, so, uh, again, behind tab seven is a report, um, right now our financial status for the year, we're at forty-seven percent of in our budget of six months in, so we're doing very well. Uh, as far as our squash revenue, we had a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents coming in from squash this past month, which is down from the month before by about seven thousand dollars. Um, next is the public safety grant, so if you'll see, this is the grant given by the state. It is only for all full-time post DPH and GFSTC certified employees. Employee between August first and August thirty-first, this has been submitted. Um, a thousand dollars will be given to the qualified employees and three hundred to the volunteer firefighters. This is not given by the county, this is, and I'm going to reiterate, given by the state. This is, we will not dis, um, disperse these funds until the funds are actually in our account to disperse. Um, just because fifty-six, fifty-six thousand dollars that will be given out to our public safety. Um, transfer station hours, Tiffany asked me to let y'all know that the transfer station will be open half a day on Thursday, the twenty-third closes on Friday, the twenty-fourth, and Monday, the twenty-seventh. They'll also be closed on New Year's, um, the thirty-first. So, um, this does cause an issue for them hauling trash to the transfer station because they usually haul on Fridays. So what she has asked them to do is we're going to haul on the Thursday before they close. If it gets full, which is liable to get full during Christmas, especially tanks, um, they will come and pack it and pack it until we can, they'll run two trucks on the following Monday, I mean, Tuesdays, sorry. And then last, um, if you'll see, there's an email behind the updates list from Ms. Laura. The Oki Pinoki event in January has been canceled. Um, two representatives from the, or, let me rephrase that, it's been canceled for a huge event. Two representatives from the community, um, can go, there are space limitations, um, Ms. Um, Ms. Laura has agreed to attend if no one is available, available to go, because it is the first week of January. Um, and then, but there is a figure event for a region in the spring, so everybody will be able to go to that. Alright, and that's all I have.
And I B A's gonna pay for her attendance and if somebody else chooses to go, because I know it's not, I have a motion for Karen.
Yes.
Alright, we'll move on to, uh, new and old business.
Got a turn of that.
Oh.
Miss Amy.
So, so I do have, I recall now this resolution. So in, um, in two thousand seven, there was an annexation dispute resolution. So between counties and cities and annexing of the cities, for instance, what we went through recently, as far as that goes, uh, there's, there was a dispute resolution process that, uh, the legislator passed, and it has never been changed, it was kind of the first draft, so to speak, of the law, and, uh, it appears that there is a need for it to be tweaked, uh, so to speak. And in twenty twenty-one, uh, the House Resolution two twenty-two, they established a committee to say, okay, you go out and study all over the state, how do we, how does it need to be changed? And that, in fact, did happen, and the committee then has now submitted their final report. They went all over the state, uh, they solicited recommendations, um, and stakeholders, and, and they've come up with recommendations. Here's how we think this dispute resolution process between cities and counties should be amended, and so this resolution is basically, and some of the ACCG come up with, for all the county commissioners to send a resolution, saying, hey, we support what that committee did, and we think that you, the legislators, the legislatorsors should adopt these recommendations by this committee, because they've studied it, they went around and asked questions, and, and this is what it is. So this resolution says, um, we want you to follow the recommendations of what the twenty twenty-one House study committee on annexations, and so that, that's what we talked about, I remember now, was, is that the ACCG has approved this, they think that these changes are needed, and they just want all the counties to come together and send this resolution, so I guess the ACCG can go to the legislators and, hey, we've got the support of all counties in the state, or most of them, and they all agree that you need to follow these recommendations, and it's really all just to kind of help prevent discord and disruption of counties and cities and all that. And as far as the specifics of what that, the recommendations were, I don't have those, but, you know, my thought was, and that's what we talked about, was if ACCG's reviewed it, and these people obviously went around studying and asking questions and talking, then, uh, most likely those changes would be good, so that was my recommendation. We talked about it, Heather and I, that we should enter for the resolution. So that's that. I guess kind of my two do this from, from last meeting, number one was, y'all recall, we had the mobile homes that were sold at the tax sale, there was two of them, as I recall. Heather and I both looked into it a little more after last meeting, and what we determined, at the tax sale, one of the mobile homes, somebody came in, whoever the owner was, which I know that, paid their taxes for the tax sale, so that one got taken out of the tax sale. The other was actually sold at the tax sale. Uh, I drafted letters to both owners, the one that came in and paid the taxes, and the one who bought at the tax sale. Uh, the one who paid the taxes is, the letter came back, I sent it regular mail and certified mail, and both came back, and it was the address that was listed on the tax bill, so not been able to make contact with that person.
I want two favors, I want to, I want to telephone him.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, the ones that were, that we wanted, remember, we just wanted to send a letter, they had forty-five days. The other guy, the other one, he contacted me, and he got my letter, and he said that he is, uh, that he is making those, he is rehabbing that, that mobile home, and he's already wrote a check for the materials to the contractor, he's hired a contractor, the only thing he said was, is he did not feel like it would be complete in forty-five days. And I told him, I said, I would talk to y'all, but I felt like, as long as he was making substantial completion, that, that y'all would be okay if it wasn't complete by forty, he just said, there's a lot of issues with materials, and according to this contractor, he said it isn't meet the forty-five day deadline, but I felt like y'all would be okay with it, as long as he's making progress.
And you know which one in favor that was?
Let's see, it was the, uh, I can tell you which one it was. It was not the nineteen eighty-four Catalina, it was the other one. It was the one that got, the one that called me back was the one that bought it at the sale, so...
Was it the man that owned the trailer park, did they even own the park?
Uh, it was an L L C, actually, so, yeah.
So it's gonna be one.
So it would be, it would be the nineteen seventy... Yeah, the nineteen seventy...
Number one, he bought.
Two, he...
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah, the nineteen seventy-two twelve by seventy-two deep south mobile deep, south mobile home, so, yeah.
But he has bought the material.
Yeah, bought a contract, he said, listen, he was a super nice guy, he said, listen, it's my, he said, I bought this to fix up and make money, I guess I don't want to resell it or rent it or whatever, but he said, it certainly might have sent it to get it done, and he said, I just, it might not be fully complete, so...
Since he said you come by this morning and that's working on it.
Yeah, I thought I heard somebody working on it, I come by, so, I would say as long as they're making a, a value effort to, uh, fix one.
And that's kind of what I felt like, I told him I felt like y'all would say, but I just wanted to make sure that that was what he wanted, but...
I'm good with that, so what, what y'all want there? What about the, what about the, we have, and I haven't got it tested?
Um, I may have to get somebody out there and actually tack the letter to the, to the mobile home itself, at this point, um...
Can you get to the door that mobile home?
Yeah, that's why, I, I don't, I don't know.
I know who, I know some people that pulled that right over there, I know who pulled it there.
Yeah, I mean, we'll just have to, I could get with Susie or Heather or one and say, hey, let's see if we can find, I mean, we got the name of the person, they just may live somewhere else, so...
So let's give it another month, and you try to contact these people, but...
Okay.
Uh, what lately we can do after that, if they haven't received the letter. Let's do everything we can lately to make sure it's either fixed or got out of the question.
Yeah, I mean, there must be some incentive to the, paid the tax.
They paid the tax.
So, I mean, that's, that was a good sign. Uh, as, the other thing we had from last week was about the residency, did everybody get my email that I sent about proving residency with regard to, that it was okay to use driver's license, county property tax bill, anything like that with an address to verify residency, or just Davis County tag? Did everybody get that email?
He's talking about the dump site.
The dump site, yeah, I just wanted to make sure y'all got my email on that, and... And of course, we've already talked about the district maps and the D R Lees. Alright, I think that's all I have, is that, any questions?
So, before we go on to an old business, we'll go back to the, uh, the support reform to the Georgia annexation dispute resolution. Adopt that resolution, I believe the motion, that if Baytown County adopts that resolution.
I'll make one, right?
Yes, for ACCG, I see. Now, a motion by Hank, uh, a second by Van, is any other discussion on that matter? Here now, I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries now. Uh, next is new and old business. Got any new or old business?
Yes, you do, Nina?
Uh, did y'all know a few weeks ago, or maybe two or two months ago, when Mr. Jim, uh, Andrew, come up and Street of Lake Architect, and y'all approved and hired him to, you know, move forward with designing the jail portion of this project that, that got going on? So that's been completed, he brought us a copy of the plans this morning, of the design, um... So, I think what I'm here for tonight is to ask y'all to consider hiring, you know, McDonald Construction out of Bay City, got the bid, they're doing the project that's in, that's going on now, it's in the process. So, basically, is hire them as the contracting manager of the jail project, put out for bids, and then let him bring the bids before y'all for approvals. Consider contracting them on that phase of it. And, and architect, not, yeah, the architect said this morning, you know, he says that naturally, nothing's coming down, nothing getting in check, everything's going up, uh, you know, he highly recommends that, you know, as soon as we can start this thing to move on, because he said probably March of next year, that they anticipate the prices on this, really gonna, um, take off, even though some of it already has, when we, you know, got the, got the bids on the, on the phase we own now, but even now, the bid on, basically, let McDonald Construction, they're here, they're working, and we're satisfied. They have done, they've done a good job, and they're very transparent in what's going on. If they just be the contracting manager on this next project, and let them do the, do the bidding and the subs, and bring y'all back up, up price, and let y'all consider. I reckon I'll ask y'all to vote on hiring them as the contracting manager.
Is it a duplicate us for, as far as financially, are, are they gonna go out and seek these, these bids on their own at this point, and bring it back to them?
Yes, sir.
So will I, I will be?
Definitely.
Any additional components that count?
Until they bring us a bid, we can either, I got one accepted, or a lot.
So we're just hiring them as construction managers?
Construction managers, and if them wants to do that, then they're gonna be the construction manager.
Right, so hopefully the rest of them.
That's right, until, until it's completed.
And there's some pros to that, having a construction manager, and you can, uh, basically tell them that you want the big bids sent down.
If you do it the other way, I think the disadvantage is doing it, putting it out for a new contractor, you got, you got this contractor here, you got one here, and that's just not really gonna die. I don't think, I believe it'd be a disadvantage for the county, and I think it'd be a disadvantage for the project as a whole, uh, if we try to do it that way.
I'll make a motion. Hire McDonald Construction.
As a construction manager.
Construction.
And new deal, and get new bids.
And I'll say it.
Got a motion by Ricky, and we got a second. A second by Van, is any more discussion on this matter? Here now, I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries now. Thank y'all. Any other new or old business?
I got some old business, but I, I, we probably need to come back to it after taking sections that could involve it there.
Alright, any other new or old business? Here none, uh, we're up to the public comment frame again, and I still have no sheet, so I guess we're in public comments. Uh, and we do need to go into executive session tonight, so I would need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it. A motion by Hank, a second by Ricky, all vote raise your right hand, motion carries now. Need a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it. A motion by Ricky, a second by Van, is any discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries now. We went in executive session to discuss personal mail and opinions, and...
Rissley.
Rissley, yeah, well...
Um, I want to make a recommendation to accept pay raises as discussed in executive session.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it. Got a motion by Ricky, and a second by Van to approve the pay raises discussed in executive session. Is any other discussion? I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries now.
Alright, the second one would be to, um, I would make a recommendation to hire a county clerk.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it. I have a motion by Ricky, and a second by Van, is there any other discussion on hiring a county clerk? I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries now.
The next one would be to, um, make a recommendation to advertise foreign accounts payable clerk.
To make a motion?
A motion by Hank, I'll say it. A second by Van, is there any discussion on advertising foreign accounts payable clerk? Here now, I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries now.
Alright, the next one would be to, um, make a recommendation to renew the county attorney, renew the county attorney's, um, contract, uh, for the year twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion.
I have a, a motion by Ricky, I'll say it by Van to renew the, uh, county attorney contract for the year twenty twenty-three, is any more discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote, everybody raise your right hand, motion carries now. Is that it?
That's it.
Alright, that's being, this is adjourned.
Yes, y'all won't believe, we're signing these things, okay?
Andy said we gotta sign them, let me.
Yeah, let me get a look here.
You gotta get both.
Very much, but...
I wouldn't know when that changed, but I don't come from...
Well, it's all about the, did you have an...